Okay, let's just go ahead and stand.
Clutch? The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are here today pursuant to Florida statutes, Chapter 164, the Governmental Conflict Resolution Act. The town initiated the conflict resolution procedures. Looks like we've got the flag now. That's how it always works out. The town initiated the conflict resolution procedures by passing a resolution outlining its desire to work within Chapter 164 last year. On April 10 of this year, staff for the county and the town participated in a conflict assessment meeting. That was an open meeting that was open to the public at Malabar Town Hall. Because no resolution was reached at the conflict assessment meeting with staff, we have now arrived at the next step in the statutory conflict resolution process known as the joint public meeting, and that's what we're holding today. As you know, County Commission Chair Rhea Pritchard will chair this meeting. Mayor Riley was gracious in allowing for that. The chair will call on speakers for public comment. As you heard, because of the number of attendees, that's going to be two minutes per speaker, so try not to repeat yourselves. If you have someone who represents a group, you may want to, you know, not everyone has to stand to say the same thing. The chair will maintain order. At the conclusion of public comment, which follows this introduction, both the town and the county have brief PowerPoint presentations setting forth the issues that were discussed at the conflict assessment phase. The town council and the county commission are tasked with considering the issues, seeking an agreement, and scheduling additional meetings for each respective governing board or their staff designees to continue to seek resolution of the conflict. If no agreement can be reached at this joint public meeting, then both parties are required to participate in mediation if the cost of mediation is equally borne between the parties. We have to decide on a mediator within 14 days of this meeting if no agreement is reached today. Once the mediator is scheduled, mediation or selected, the mediation takes place within 14 days. If the conflict is resolved today, the county and the town must adopt or pass an ordinance resolution or enter local agreement that reflects the terms or conditions of the resolution of the conflict at separate meetings. If there's a failure to resolve the conflict through the prescribed procedures described after this meeting and after mediation, then the parties may avail themselves of any otherwise legal remedy. In this case, that would mean the county could proceed with the currently abated mediation. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Pritchard.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all that information. We're going to start with public comments. If you would come up when you're called, state your name and address. I have a little time stalker here, and then I'll tell you when time's up. We're not going to be able to add time to it because there's so many people, just so that you don't think I'm rude when I tell you when your time's up and just kind of quit. If we could also make sure nobody speaks out from the audience, because you can tell there's a little bit of difficulty hearing today, so no chairs and no booths, if that's all right as well. Good? All right, I'm going to start with Mr. Grant Ball.
My name is Grant Ball, Malabar, Florida. I want to bring up something that I haven't heard too much talked about, and that's the fact that we've losing, Malabar's got 20% of its land in eels property. And I think that whatever you want to do with eels, if you cut out the use of it for the enjoyment of the residents of Malabar, then what we should be doing is giving the town some money to make up for the fact that we've lost 20% of the revenue, especially in our eels property down where Harris is, because that's where our biggest impact would have been, because that's an industrial complex. So we're basically paying 20% more taxes to give this land to eels, and I think that should be borne by the state, the county, and everybody else that's affected with this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jason Strobel.
So my name is Jason Strobel, and I'm from the area of Florida. I just want to say that I have a long list of clubs I've been a part of in my life, Sierra Club, Mountain Grill Conservation, Wildland Conservation, and I myself have yet to meet anyone who disagrees with the PVA, the research team being done for scrub jays. We love scrub jays. The fact that we're being pitched is that we just want shade on trails is outrageous. Before I continue, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the scrub jay of South Brevard only. There are other populations of Brevard that will be fine with continued management. According to the PVA, we could have a lot of the property in the south end 100% cleared and would not save the scrub jay. What we really need is 70% strong, 70% strong habitat, and we need a minimum of AJs per year supplementation. In truth, our county does have many immersive nature spaces with old growth forestry. Everyone's ripping out every piece of wood as possible. They all have their reasoning, including eels. Eels actually restored a property close to my place, held now in Krucheck Sanctuary. This property is cleared of almost all trees, is now virtually an open field. Even with supplementation, this population of jays will go extinct and will be left with an open field devoid of the animal we actually cleared the property for. Eels is looking to remove 10,000 to 20,000 trees from the property. We are a high-tech community who loves the outdoors. When I first moved here, I worked for Harris. Roughly 80% of the engineers I worked closely for have moved from this county to other hotpens of tech that provide more outdoor space for their recreation. The proposed plan that we have does not adhere to what we know about viable scrub jay habitat. For instance, buffer zones, Malabar scrub ignores that, and we have to look at the bigger picture. The only thing we consider isn't just the scrub jay of South Brevard County. What we really want is a balanced plan, and I encourage you all to look at the bigger picture, to consider our future generations and our future residents, to find a balanced plan that we can save the scrub jay of South Brevard as well as nature space. Thank you.
That sounds pretty good. Mr. William Fisk.
I'm William Fisk of Palm Bay, and I am the president-elect of the Space Coast Audubon. And we are asking both parties to look at science. And as a gentleman said before, that we're dealing with one property, but there are a whole lot of people, and we need to watch out for the scrub jay. The scrub jay is an endangered species, and we need to work for their family. If we don't cut some of the trees, the red-shouldered hawks, who seem to think that scrub jays are delicacy, they really like them, and we need to cut their perches down so that they are not predating on the scrub jay. So we are asking you all to look at the science, come to a compromise on it. Most things are compromisable, so just, but the scrub jay comes first sadly. We need maybe come up with some more recreation area, but we need to think about the scrub jay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Heather Elko. Next will be Jim Burdy.
Thank you, Jim.
Name and address for me, ma'am.
Yes, Heather Elko, I'm from Melbourne, 66 Thomas Barber Drive. I'm here to support the scientific management of the Malabar scrub sanctuary and the Florida scrub jays that are part of this unique ecosystem. I'm confused as to why a city that is fortunate enough to have conservation land in their midst would want to develop that property. Yes, I use the word "develop" because altering the property for human recreation is just that, development. And we all know that the first victims of development are the species of that ecosystem, including in this case endangered scrub jay. Those who want to alter the Malabar scrub maintenance plan have themselves enjoyed taking guests to see these delightful birds. You will never forget the magical moment when the scrub jay landed on the ground nearby, cocked the eye at you, and proceeded to dig up an acorn that had cashed for leading times. You have been thrilled to see a pair of devoted scrub jay parents bringing out the kids for the first time to learn how to forage. You have seen these youngsters caboring among the branches of low scrub plants. Yes, low scrub plants. That is their necessary habitat and their survival. That point is this: Be careful. What you wish for, you may get it, and in the process, lose what you love. I know that cyclists and I share the same appreciation of the scrub environment because I've often met them on the scrub trails at Wickham Park. Cyclists of the scrub choose their time to be out, and rarely in the heat of the day. They don't demand that the scrub be something it isn't. Imagine if cyclists went to the mountains and complained that it was too hilly. What if they went cycling in the Everglades and demanded something be done because it was too damp? The scrub is an ecosystem, respected for what it is. I voted my taxes to go to the environmental boot of the whole county, not just one municipality. There is a bit of ancient wisdom, you've all heard it, the story of the camel in the tent. Those who argue for control of Malabar scrub sanctuary and oppose the management plan we have voted for already have access to enjoy this endangered land.
Give me a few times up. Thank you. Mr. Jim Burdy, and then I have Richard Owen.
Morning. My name is Jim Burdy, and I'm speaking today as a resident of Rockledge and supporter of the county's main acquisition and management. First, I'd like to thank all Malabar residents and all of our community for their support of eel acquisitions and the current voter-approved bond referendum. It's obvious to me that all of them may differ on certain components of this management plan, certainly to the value of the county natural areas, so thank you for the common ground there. As a Rockless resident, I have reviewed and am in support of eel's management plans for all scrub reserves, including the Malabar scrub. Given the scientific study detailing Brevard County's scrub job populations and their survival outlook, my support includes maximizing critical habitat to further tree density reductions specified by the FWC and US Fish and Wildlife Service habitat guidelines. Hence, I am opposed to single municipality interfering with management practices that are well documented, integral steps necessary to aid the recovery of endangered endemic threat, or excuse me, endemic threatened species. Lastly, both FWC and US Fish and Wildlife are designated to support of scrub jay as protected, and both agencies have direct ties to Malabar scrub conservation area. FWC through financial support and legally binding management agreements, US Fish and Wildlife through legally binding scrub jay habitat mitigation commitments over portions of the property. Both agencies have been watching from the sidelines to date. However, we should be aware of the further drawn-out interference with their scrub jay management guidelines, including tree reduction zones. We'll certainly eventually draw kind of a strict and one-sided response in support of jay management. So right now, these guys are waiting there. They're not going to wait quietly forever. So in closing, thank you for support of the recently passed bond referendum, and thank you to the county commissioners for inclusion of bond and bonding consideration in the upcoming budget negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Mr. Richard Owen, and then Mr. Vince Lamb.
Hello, community. Thanks for having me. I'll just kind of start at the beginning here. When eels was initiated, it was initiated because a group of citizens got together and said, gee, I don't really want all of Brevard County to turn into a strip mall or a housing area. So let's set aside some land so that it can remain somewhat natural and everybody can have the benefits of having a balanced community. So the initial idea was eels would manage the land and keep it in a way that is fairly natural for the environment. So now we come to Malabar. So what does eels want to do with our land? They want to come in, clear coat it all, burn it, and then they think that this is going to make the scrub, give the scrub jays a nice habitat. Well, this happened over in Jordan Scrub. My friend that works for Harris, he happened to look out his window one day and goes, holy mackerel, Jordan Scrub is now a parking lot, because after they shredded it, burned it all down, that's what it looked at. It was dark, because that's what parking lots look at. So a couple years later, I went over there because I was curious to see what was going on, and I looked down, and what I saw was a sawgrass desert, just sawgrass everywhere. So I sat back and I said, wow, you know, how are the scrub jays going to deal with this? When I was driving back home, I thought, man, what on earth are the scrub jays going to do?
Sir, that took two minutes.
Time's up. Two minutes went by. Way too quick.
Mr. Vince Lamb, and then Mark.
Your chair for the record, Ms. Hoffmeister, council member.
Hi, welcome, ma'am. Thank you. Hey, Mr. Lamb?
Okay, good morning. Vince Lamb, South Merritt Island. The combination of Malabar scrub sanctuary, Jordan scrub sanctuary, Cameron Preserve, Grand Valcaria scrub, Niko scrub, and San Sebastian Buffet Preserve State Park represents the largest area of scrub habitat considered attractive to Florida scrub jays in Brevard County, experienced some portions of Kennedy Space Center. These properties each have resident scrub jay populations and collectively provide scrub landscape that has a high probability of sustaining South Brevard population of jays for the long term. Florida scrub jay has previously occupied many other properties in Brevard County where they can no longer be found. This includes an eel problem sanctuary right across the lagoon. Coconut Point Sanctuary in South Beaches had a resident population for many years until about 10 years ago. The loss of the adjacent scrub habitat to development left the sanctuary too small for the long-term survival of the resident scrub jays. I strongly support the management of Malabar scrub sanctuary to give priority to Florida scrub jays and to allow passive recreation activities along the perimeter. By taking these steps, we can ensure that this unique and important species continues to thrive in the wild. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mark Gunter, and then Denise Simpson.
Good morning, Mr. Mark Gunter. I'm from Palm, and I live at 1240 Vintertown Trail, which backs to the sanctuary. Luckily enough, I was able to move here a year and a half ago and get to see all the other species of wildlife in the sanctuary, let alone how you didn't like it. And I think that we ought to be able to come to some compromise on how many trees and what they, if you go look at Jordan and you ride Jordan or hike Jordan, and I've done that most of my life myself, it's a catastrophe. If you ask me, there's no wildlife, zero.
That's awful. It's awful.
It's awful. And so what I'm afraid of, I have turkeys that come in and out of my backyard, I've got snakes, bobcats, even the panther back there. Okay? And what I'm afraid of is you're going to run all that wildlife out, and we're not going to be able to enjoy it. Everybody wants to enjoy the scrub jay. Audience, please. Everybody. My wife encountered them just the other day, two of them. They're friendly, they're beautiful, but we don't, we can't sacrifice all the other species they birth. There's got to be a compromise. It can't be 10,000 trees and mow everything down. Maybe a thousand trees. And that's all I can say.
Thank you. Denise Simpson, and an agreement with the town of Malabar. Please note comments from the front, just so everybody's got the clear time to speak. It's only right. Listen, Simpson, you're up.
Hi, I'm Denise Saraband Simpson from Bellsmere. I'm a longtime scrub jay volunteer. I just wanted to say, the property was acquired as conservation land. The proposed restoration was clearly stated in management plan that was approved and opened to public comment at the time it was approved. And Florida scrub jays are in decline. The area is critical habitat, and simply mountain bikers can go somewhere else, the scrub jays don't have that luxury. And nobody's saying that mountain bikers can't be out in the Malabar scrub. I'm a fat old lady, and I spent literally hundreds of hours in the summer in properly maintained scrub habitat. There's no reason people can't go out there on bikes, but it is, it should be, it needs to be preserved for the scrub jays who don't have the option to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thorley Thompson, and then Lou Connet, you're next, sir.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Thorley Thompson, I'm from Mims, and I know that, I know that the loss of trees is hard to swallow, but if you go out in Kennedy Space Center, where they've been managing for years for scrub jays, there is an incredible amount of wildlife in the areas where they have managed and burned and cleared the trees for scrub jays. There's deer, hogs, everything, all kinds of birds. So I'm not sure what happened down at Jordan, but I hope that it wouldn't happen here. But this land was purchased for conservation, and I hope we can reach a compromise. I think that the compromise that the selection and management committee had suggested is reasonable in that they would leave some of the opec and some of the areas intact, and I hope that we can reach a compromise today. You know, we're going to have a million residents here eventually in Brevard County, and these habitats are critical, you know, to keep our diversity here. We're one of the most diverse areas in the entire state, and we need to keep that in balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou Connet, and then I have Deborah Uret, I think.
Thank you very much. Lou Connet, Melbourne. The property was acquired by a process and a vote by the county, the full county population. I respect variety of uses, but I believe that we have to live with the process that we've adopted and have voted for. I support accommodation within the defined uses, and I support compromise, but I don't support unilateral action in this post. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Deborah Uret, and then my lady. My lady? My check.
Hi, my name is Deborah, but nobody else is going to be a Deborah.
I have a Deborah Lane man, Deborah Lane man Uret?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Sorry, my name is, I'm just going to speak as a citizen today. I live in Suntree, a part of Melbourne. I've been a member, an active member in leadership positions in both the local Audubon group and Sierra Club here in the county, and I've also taken master naturalist classes. I'm not an expert, but from all the field trips I've taken and activities I've taken, I've learned over the years that other scrub jays are unique, they say endemic, unique to Florida. I'm not from Florida, and one thing I found interesting, when I moved down here, was the variety of habitats to be found that could be found nowhere else in scrub jays or even being considered to be the state bird, because they're only found here in Florida. So they need all the space they can get, and from what I learned in the classes I took, the land that is most available is the scrub land, which is high and dry land. It used to be high land when there were seas covering Florida. So naturally, everybody wants to build there, so there's very little of their land left. So they really have to struggle to survive, and each time we lose a high and dry property that should be scrub, we lose more habitat for scrub jays. So part of that is burning. There's lots of parts of the country where the habitat needs to be burned to be maintained and kept low of toddler plants. So scrub is one of those habitats. Predators like hawks, owls, they will eat small birds and small animals, so too many trees everywhere else in the county, I wish we had more trees, but in scrub territory, we need less trees. So I just wish you would go with the original idea for eels. There are other parks for recreation, but eels are part of helping to maintain our unique Florida habitat. So thank you very much for listening and attending. Thank you.
Mr. Michael Majak.
I'm Michael Majak from Titus, and I've been involved in helping support eels since the 90s. I was on the original pack that started eels, when we pushed the idea of science and management behind our decision-making. And that, I think, is what should rule the day. The purpose of this land was to save the scrub jays. It's nice that we have recreational opportunities along with that, but it's the jade that's the purpose of this property. And if we can't be respectful for those that are endemic and endangered, then I'm not sure really what we're doing here, because the purpose of the land was to save the scrub jay, and I believe in the science behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Wilbur.
He just walked out, maybe to the bathroom.
Stuart Nicholson. Hey, you guys should see the way you write your names.
He's an engineer.
I was about to call him doctor.
My name is Stuart Nicholson. I'm from Palm Bay, just north of here. This is unique land here, with the hammock and all the trees and dozens of bike friends and hundreds and thousands walk and bicycle just all the time. And while other people say, we can put parks everywhere else, that's not the case. These are the second-best mountain bike trails in the state. The other ones are in Ocala. Many people go out there and ride them for that purpose. And the county already has a very shortage of parks of its type, and this is unique property. I'm sure I voted for the eels property, but that, I really don't remember that proposition telling us, we're going to management and we're going to cut down 10,000 to 20,000 your trees. That wasn't in there. I probably would have voted against it, because as the last speaker pointed out, there's a lot of this county that doesn't have trees. And immediately south of here, eels owns huge amounts of property. Maybe there's a way to move the scrub jay out. Finally, the last thing I want to say is all of us taxpayers, all of us own this property, and I was very unhappy to see the county close it off, shut off the management contract, spend more taxpayer money putting up gates and cutting us off for the last year. Figure out how to work together if you need property management, lethal management, whatever. Take the work. Thank you.
Bob Wilbur is back.
Thank you, Bob Wilbur.
Bob Wilbur, 2500 Glavia Road, Malabar. I've been a resident of Malabar since 76, but I'm a painter since 66. I worked for GDC up in Palm Bay and watched all this Turkey Creek area develop. I love eels. I was on Planet Arizona when we all came into town. I fought for you, saying, just an amenity that's got to be good for the town, and I still believe that. And I think what we've got is a location situation with Turkey Creek Sanctuary South, which is what I call Malabar scrub west, because that whole basin of Turkey Creek and all its tributaries all form a habitat, home tree, if you will, of all the birds. Turkey Creek Sanctuary, just this last year, had reported over 90 different species of birds since January, exciting, and you've heard the top of the panthers and the otters and everything. When you start whittling on these stands of trees, you open it up to the exotics. Peppa tree is a good example, and where you see peppa trees is where it's been disturbed. I think that on leaving that Turkey Creek Sanctuary area intact, and the way you're preserving the oak trees, pine trees, I think it's common scroungers.
That's it. Bob. That's it. Thank you.
Keith Winston? You guys are doing great, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Keith Winston.
I'm sorry, can you have Ray turn off their cell phones and stuff? That would be awesome. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Keith Winston from Art Zoo. As many of you know, we've been working with scrub jays for a long time. We actually pioneered the methodology to translocate them, to move them from one site for another, because they're such poor flyers, they can't do that on their own. So when they're doomed, we're the folks who often come in and move them. And I wanted to make two points today about them. The first is that the science behind them, the population management, was a group we helped bring in. It's the same folks who do this around the world for tigers and pandas and penguins. They're literally the best at what they do. This is what they do. They pop. So I feel very, very comfortable about the science. And the second is uniqueness. We've heard some speakers. I was actually in Turkey Creek on Saturday, and I saw a short-tailed hawk. That's a specialist hawk that lives in deep forest cover. You will never see that over scrub. And then yesterday was one of the eels properties, very healthy eels properties, and I saw scrub jays. You will never see them in Turkey Creek. And the analogy that I like to use, I talked to a couple of folks from the biking community, met with me graciously. And the analogy I like to use is this: If we're sending missions to space to get people to the moon, and along the way, we bring some cargo, that's great. But if the time we're actually putting people for the first time there, we're not going to put in extra cargo and say, "Hey, we're happy with a 20% more risk of those people not making it to the moon, because we've been sending cargo all along. Let's compromise. Let's keep sending cargo." There's no compromise with scrub jays. They are such specialists. They live in what does look like a scrub desert. That's what they need. And if you tip it at all, if you put in the trees, the Cooper's hawks, the yellow ratt snakes, everything else starts feeding on them. They are super-specialized. And you might not love the look of that habitat, although when well-managed, if you come to Crickshank, it's beautiful. It's got its own unique set of animals, and no, you're not going to see turkeys running around there. They're like the short-tailed hawks. They don't want to be in the scrub. So we have this mosaic of habitat here in Bivard, and our job is to manage all of it and use the best science to do it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sandra Sullivan? And then we'll be Mary Ann Civil.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So in January of last year, I spoke in support of these protections for the scrub and the removal of the trees. And I have a reversal on that position for a few things that have occurred since then. But first, I want to just thank the county and the city of Malabar for your beautiful trail system and all the scrub land that you set aside. So February of last year, I was driving by Crickshank Sanctuary, which is a beautiful place to go to for the scrub jay, and noticed all the tall trees. So why is Malabar being selected and not, why are we not maintaining all of our scrub jay habitat? So that's a picture of Malabar, as you guys all know. So in August of last year, at a Kennedy Commissioner meeting, the same commissioner brought up a proposal to sell off half of the eels lands, particularly the eels lands held by the state. And for that part of it, that hasn't been discussed at all, what may be an agenda here that I want everybody to be aware of. My recommendation is that the city and the county agree with what they agree on right now, which is 90% of what was on the table, you all agreed on. We've lost two seasons of scrub jay nesting. We lost last year, and now we've lost this year. So two seasons that the scrub jays could have been reproducing on these lands because we did not move it forward with 90% of the plan that everybody agreed on. You can always come back and revisit the other part that you're in disagreement with. But the obvious solution today is for both sides to come together and agree on what you agree on right now.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Ann Civil?
Civil, but thank you.
I thought I was doing this.
Mary Ann Civil, other than northeast Palm Bay. Been there for many years. I was also very familiar with the eels program for many years, and I would hope everyone remembers that the original purchase for this scrub property was to benefit the existing scrub jay population in that area. Second of all, Eels has made several compromises with keeping some of the tree canopy, and they have also proposed moving some of the trails that will be now open, moving that to buffer canopy areas. So I think compromise, as people have been saying, is well-deserved, and I hope you can put your heads together today and keep the ego out the front door here. And I hopefully, you guys can come to some resolution, because obviously, the citizens here want to use that property. But please remember that recreation was secondary value for this property. The original purchase, and I can see people are not happy with that, but the original purpose was for the scrub jay families. And if you allow this, as has been done at Crickshank, which several people have mentioned, that families are coming back because of the land management that has been done at that particular location. So if you allow the management to work, which is scientific and has been in place for a long time, then I think you'll see, reap those benefits, and everyone can get back to using the property as it was intended. Thank you, ma'am.
Bill DeBussch?
Hey, good morning. My name is Bill DeBussch. I live in Western Melbourne, and I'm the chairperson for local Sierra Club, the Turtle Coast Group. Got about 8,000 members in the borders of Indian River and Malabar County. And the Florida scrub jay is only found in Florida. You can travel to Alaska, Illinois, California, you can see bald eagle. But the Florida scrub jay is the only bird, only found in Florida. The scrub jay population is declining. Currently, it's on a federal threatened species list, and as the population continued to decline, it will become endangered and potentially extinct. We need to protect the Florida scrub jay habitat. Latest population, by studies here in Malabar County, say that it will become extinct in Malabar County in 40 to 70 years if we don't maintain this habitat. The town of Malabar and Bivard, I think, need to come to a compromise, but the Florida scrub jay is the primary purpose for this land. The proposed restoration of Malabar Scrub will likely allow populations to thrive and increase at least 18 families, based on long-term demographic studies and models that have undergone extensive scientific criteria. The habitat restoration will not interfere with public access or recreation, but the lack of restoration will almost certainly result in extinction of Florida scrub jays in an area that will establish primarily for the purpose of, to be maintained, to ensure the Florida scrub jays do not vanish. Therefore, we're asking that this be resolved in a manner that ensures proper maintenance for the Malabar scrub and to ensure the continued existence of Florida scrub jay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mike Britt?
Right here. It may take me two minutes to get there, but that... Morning. Mark Britt. I reside in Country Cove, Malabar, and my property backs up to the sanctuary. Thanks for these couple of minutes to address this issue. I would like to preface what I'm about to say, as I have a lot of respect for the county commission and all those involved in this. You didn't get there without hard work and dedication, but at the same time, I want to thank all the members of the town in Malabar, mostly volunteers. You're here missing work. I attended the April 10th meeting, and, you know, quite frankly, I left scratching my head, thinking, "Why is the proposal submitted by the town not been even considered in at least a little bit?" This proposal was put together by engineers and volunteers for the town, the Trails and Greenway Committee. They put in many, many hours of research in this, and it was, and basically, all we're talking about is a little slice of paradise for the many, many people who use the sanctuary. It's all we want is, and it's a very, very practical, very reasonable request or compromise. You know, we've got way too many things. We shouldn't be here today. This should be over, all right? We got way too many things to think about in life. We got mass shootings, too many problems. We got banks going under, inflation. Come on. Let's get this done. Please, just look at the proposal. It's a very small request.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. And I was going to bring donuts, but that wasn't what I wanted.
Shelshwin?
Good morning. My name is Michelle Shwin. I live at 2469 Allen Boulevard, northeast Palm Bay, 4397. And I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also speaking for my mother. She can't be here. And we just love the trees. We don't want too many trees to go. We love the trails. I remember we walked, and I don't know, like, it was fenced up, and we were confused, and blah, blah, you know, whatever. Anything. I'm going off track. But we love the trees. We hope not too many trees have to be cut, but we understand, like, that's my, that's our stance, just hope not too, too many trees have to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Joy Peters?
Hi, I'm Joy Peters. I've lived in Malabar for over 30 years now. I'm also native Florida again. But I'm here representing just myself today and my family and friends who couldn't be here at 10 o'clock on Monday, who can't all get off of work at this hour. I thought the cutting off of the property to the citizens, to punish the citizens for this little tiff, was a little heavy-handed, right? And using the sheriff to arrest people? I mean, for real. But, you know, I understand. You guys do what you do. But the town is asking for 3% of the property to make it natural for the citizens. And we're not anti-scrub jay. We just want a place where we can go and enjoy the beauty. I'm glad you thought the town was lovely, and we're trying to keep it lovely, right? We're trying to keep these natural areas, not only for the scrub jays to thrive, but also for humans to go out there and have recreation and shade and beauty. A week ago, Sunday, I was literally on the Appalachian Trail, right? And it's just beautiful, and it just made me sad that we don't have anything even comparable here, right? And I know we're never going to match the beauty of a mountain trail, but we have something beautiful that we can all go and enjoy, and I don't want to see it entirely destroyed, right? We can come to a compromise where we can help the scrub jays, but we can also have places for humans to go and be and enjoy the beauty of nature here. So yeah, I would like to, you know, support the town, and I want to see this compromise happen and end this, you know, little tiff we're having over here, because like somebody else said, it's not helping the scrub jays. It's not helping the humans, right? And we have a lovely place. Let's not destroy it. Let's not clearcut all our trees, right? Let's have someplace for us to go to. All right? Thank you.
Catherine Vecchio?
Hi, Catherine Vecchio, property owner at 1175 Murray Street. Listening to everybody, my thoughts have been changing a lot. I personally would like to see the park back, open back up. The park is meant for everyone to enjoy. And as a student in the Florida Master Naturals program, I see a lot of benefit in that park naturally. But what this also tells me is that there is a lack of space that the Florida bikers need, and we need to find space. As a volunteer, I put a lot of time in a lot of different areas, just like these mountain bikers did, and they maintain that trail. So we, what the real big message here is, is that we, as citizens of the county, we want more open space, whether it's active or passive. And our native species are disappearing. So I may advocate for other species in the county, but because of conditions I can't control, that species doesn't thrive. But this eels property was set aside for the scrub jay. Naturally, there would be fire. There is no fire naturally happening. So the trees got to where they are because what happens naturally in Florida could not happen. So I see the beauty of it. Every time I'm on my property, I love it, you know? But I can understand the city's perspective, but I also understand the county. And I think we have a bigger problem here, is because the more we develop, the more green space we lose, and the more our native species are suffering. So I would hope that maybe you would consider opening that park today and let residents use it from all of the...
Kevin Schwinn?
Kevin Schwinn. Oh, there you are.
And then we have Ronda Mayo. You'll be next.
Hi, Kevin Schwinn, 2469 Allen Boulevard. I live right at Fandis Allen. I've got butts up to all the sanctuaries and everything out there. And this is one of the reasons that I love this area. I've been hiking and biking and walking those trails for years and years. One of the ways I met my wife. And I will do anything to support keeping that as natural as possible. I understand we need to do what we can to support the scrub jays. At the same time, I've never seen a scrub jay walk around with chainsaw or a baccal. So there's got to be a way for them to keep their areas clear, but we don't need to go in through and cut the entire place down. Also, there's got to be a compromise here. I really don't understand why the citizens who use that area are being punished, because you guys are figuring out what's going on with it. That's served no purpose at all, I think, for some big ego, I'm guessing. So I'm, and furthermore, all of that, the people that voted in the eels stuff, I'm sure the majority of us didn't think that you were going to cut down a bunch of trees when we voted to preserve that land. We were voting to preserve the way we see it now, not with a whole bunch of bulldozers running over, gopher tortoises and bark cats and all sorts of stuff that also live out there. So do the right thing. Come to a compromise, and let's figure this out, because I'm definitely going to vote in the next election.
I have Ronda Mayo, and again, I'm going to ask that people, please don't respond afterwards. So if somebody does say something you like, do not vote them either. It just makes it...Yes, ma'am?
Ronda Mayo, Indian Harbor Beach. I support the support of thinning of the trees at Malabar Scrub. One of the unique things about Florida is its many different habitats, from wetlands to okanics to scrubs. Each of these habitats has its own unique beauty and set of plants and wildlife. One of the most endangered of those habitats is scrub. In Malabar County alone, the natural scrub community was estimated to have diminished by 69%. That was of, as of 1991, so I'm sure it's much less now. Scrub habitats are just as important, perhaps even more so, as the other forested elements in Florida. The sandy soils of scrub play a part in controlling stormwater runoff, help groundwater recharge, and maintain water quality in the lagoon. Well-managed scrub sanctuaries reduce the chance of uncontrolled fire. So while I appreciate the desire to protect trees in general, it should be in context of the habitat that would have naturally occurred there with mounds, outmans, intervention, or neglect. So, and I also want to emphasize that the votes are proven taxing themselves to protect environmentally endangered lands, not necessarily recreational lands. Passive recreational land would be considered if done without harming the habitat to be protected. And again, Malabar Scrub was purchased to protect scrub jay and preserve habitat. So yes, those shaded areas are beautiful, but we need to embrace all kinds of nature's beauty, including scrub. So if there's a way to return the area to its natural state and create some shaded areas for the hikers and cyclists, great.
Thank you, ma'am. Lindsay Meyer. Ms. Lindsay, are you here?
My name is Lindsay Meyer. I live next to Malabar Scrub Sanctuary, and I'm from Fort Wild Lake Hospital. I live next to Malabar Scrub Sanctuary, and I'm from the Fort Wildlife Hospital. I think people have spoke on behalf of the Florida Scrub Jays, but I would like to speak on behalf of the rest of the wildlife. I work with the wildlife in our area all day, all the time. It is my job, and I love it. And the habitat is becoming unsuitable for many of Florida's wildlife, including gopher tortoises, which is one I'm going to focus on, because they're keystone species. So keystone species is important, because all of the other species in that environment rely on them. They have 300 animals that rely on them to dig burrows, to give shelter from fire, near hailstorms, and all sorts of things, cool spaces out of the sun. And right now, the habitat is not trending and advancing towards gopher tortoises. When you go along the roadside, it's full of gopher tortoise burrows at the road. I cannot tell you how many gopher tortoises die because they get hit by cars. This is the open space, the dry sunny areas that they need. When it gets shady, it increases the parasite loads in gopher tortoises, because they need that open sunshine and open scrub habitat. I also live right on the Scrub Sanctuary, and I used to have Scrub Jays in my yard. And I don't. And I keep thinking that if this had happened sooner and we hadn't had this delay, that I might still have a Scrub Jays in my yard. And I would like to see the habitat returned, and I really look forward to being able to bike and hike there again, when we have a restored habitat that supports all of our Florida native species. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Craig Smith?
My name is Craig Smith. I'm from Grand Valkyrie. I wasn't going to speak today, because I don't know that anything I said, say is going to make a difference or be heard, but there's a couple of things that I've heard that are kind of interesting to me. One is it's funny what people latch on to. I'm going to read a quote that's been circulating at a lot of places for a long time, and a lot of you are probably in this room, because we received a tweet.
Sir, if you address the.
A Facebook post. And it said, "The issue here is that the all-fored bikers want the trees preserved throughout the property to shade the trails." That's been around for a long time. I think you did, John. I think originally it was eight of us.
Sir, if you address the.
There's eight mountain bikers. Well, we're not here because of eight mountain bikers wanting shade on the trails. We're here because the town of Malabar, that's designated as a trail town by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, has an active Trail and Greenway Committee, and they're asking for 3%, less than 3%, for the trees to be preserved. Another thing, I keep hearing the word Malabar. Malabar, Malabar Restoration, Malabar, one word. Malabar is two very separate, very different pieces of property. One is to the east, it's very square-shaped, and it makes perfect sense to do a habitat restoration there for the Scrub Jays. In fact, the town offered to give them the permit to start work on the east very early in this process, so they can start working, then fit the Scrub Jays while they worked out the details for the other property. They refused that. They said, "No, we'll go to court." So everybody here, go home, go to the property praiser's website.
Sir, I'm sorry, you got to address the board. Thank you.
Look at the land, use their measuring tools. There is zero optimal habitat. That property is too small. It's rectangular, it's complex in shape, and there is zero potential prime Scrub Jay habitat in there. It makes no sense to do the same scale massive restoration on a small, complex piece of property as you would do on a large piece of property. It's irresponsible.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are now done with public comment. I believe we have presentations, and we're going to start with the city of Malabar, and then the county's got a presentation, then county attorney will turn this over to the county's speaker in direction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're absolutely right. The town has a presentation. I believe it's going to be presented by the Trails and Greenway Committee. And following that, Mr. Knight from the E O program has a brief presentation as well.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I live with the Trails and Greenways Committee for the town of Malabar, representing kind of our stance on this whole issue. My, just for the record, I live in Malabar, on a, on a forty hallway trail. So I'm used to trails, every day I live on a trail, right? But any rate, what I want to do today is basically kind of bring us all up to speed on where we are with this issue. We found out about the details of really the restoration, and it kind of got us thinking. Really what it, what it did is it made us think of a few things. Obviously, the Scrub Jays, the science behind the Scrub Jays, ultimately, what is the restoration plan? What are we talking about with that? And we really, what I'd like to do is cover a couple of these things. East and west are very different. You've heard that today. And ultimately, I want to talk about, really, what it amounts to, what I do, a very balanced request, very reasonable request. You've heard a lot of folks talk about season matters, the outcome today. So really, what we're talking about first is Scrub Jay science. Scrub Jays, I mean, we, you've heard a lot about it today. You have a lot of professionals, a lot of experts in the audience. A lot of folks really know the Scrub Jays. Well, the town of Malabar knows Scrub Jays a whole lot more than the town knew nearly two years ago. Scrub Jays, again, endemic. They're used to basically, they're only in Florida. And looking at a map, they're really under the panhandle and not quite across Lake of Chojos. It's kind of the middle of the state is where you see Scrub Jays. Really, what we're talking about is it's a unique animal that has a breeding pair, and it has one to five helpers that are different ages, but they actually help as a family. Amazing bird, truly something worth saving. And I think that you've probably sensed it from the town, from the various people that have spoken today, the whole idea that there's two forests here. There's not. You've got a bunch of people that love the outdoors, love the nature, and appreciate the nature. And I don't think we're under attack. I think we're okay here. Say something wrong somewhere. But the restoration is really about making the science work, making the plan work. So what the town did is the town took a look. The town took a look at the Scrub Sanctuary. We go back to this here, what is it we're talking about? Well, Malabar Scrub Sanctuary is ultimately two places. You've got east, who's almost a big square, and you've got kind of a strange-looking thing to the west called Malabar Scrub Sanctuary West. And what is ultimately going on is this is the greenway known as the Turkey Creek Greenway. This is, Turkey Creek connects to the Indian River Lagoon. This is a huge greenway estuary. This is basically where we have a natural site very close to a large urban population. And I know that people have talked in the past about what is the importance to the, from an urban perspective? And it's been mentioned up in the Titus Mall area, in North Revard, that the folks there consider Fox Lake and that sanctuary area up there is basically their central park. Well, I put forth today that Malabar recognizes this area, this is our central park. This is the south, it's not just Malabar, this is the South Revard. You've got Melbourne, you've got West Melbourne, you've got Palm Bay, huge population, you've got Mico to the south, you've got Grand Valkyrie, and you have Malabar. These are all areas with a huge population, roughly 250-plus thousand people. I'm sorry, too, that we're here today, but we're here to be productive. And basically, what we've got is a urban forest that is under a question, what do we do with it before we lose the urban forest? Yet we also need to address the Scrub Jays. We're not against that. So basically, let's talk the restoration plan. Saying that, this time restoration plan. If you notice in the middle, before I hit, click one more time, you've got Stillwater and Country Cove. These are residents' private developments in the middle. Up above, you have Cameron Preserve. It's a 100-acre preserve managed by town of Malabar. You have above that Glenbrook at Palm Bay, an assisted living center. And if you see kind of right underneath Glenbrook at Palm Bay, you can see in the upper left-hand corner, that's the Turkey Creek area up there. And some of the property we're talking about actually goes up to Turkey Creek, and you've heard some experts today basically say, you're not going to see Scrub Jays in Turkey Creek. Well, this plan somewhat addresses trying to put Scrub Jay habitat on Turkey Creek. So we'll be talking about that. Really, what we're talking here is that the science, the energies that went forth, a lot of people put a lot of effort. There's been a lot of studies about Kennedy Space Center, there's been a lot of studies to the south, and what they call the south and central mainland study, there's a VETTA population, there's something called a PVA. And a PVA is basically population viability analysis. And some of these things are trying to make this work in this site. And we're really talking that Malabar Scrub Sanctuary plus Jordan Scrub Sanctuary plus Mico Scrub Sanctuary, that came to 2,631 acres. And a lot of the science appears to have been developed, a lot of the plan, it's had really more of the plan, looks like it was based on this big area that doesn't exist as a contiguous area. What we're talking about is the stats were applied, we think, without looking at the site. And this is our concern. Throughout everything you read about Scrub Jays, it seems to be, everybody agrees that on the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission's guidelines for Scrub Jays, I think last published in 2019, they're basically saying there's two ways you do Scrub Jays. There's two metrics that are key. One is a thousand-foot buffer, basically an area with minimal trees of height, so you have a buffer between the forest and where the Scrub Jays start to live, that area. And a thousand-foot is for optimal. There's two key words. There's optimal and there's suitable. Suitable is 300 feet. So two different things, and they don't really specify, you're at 999, are you then suitable? It appears so. If you make it 1,000, you're at optimal. But the plan called for 1,000-foot buffers throughout this plan for Malabar Scrub Sanctuary restoration. And the other part of being optimal habitat has to do with the height of the terrain, the scrub height, and also the amount of open space. And nobody's contesting that Scrub Jays need scrub, they need open habitat to catch their food, to hunt, these type things. But really, what we're talking about is that the metrics to be applied to the MSS restoration plan were based on bigger stats, a bigger area that more is Jordan, more is Mico scrub, and ultimately, even the scientists agree, the St. Sebastian State Preserve is the big opportunity in Revard for where Scrub Jays can regain population viability. So really, what we're talking about is something that's important. Scrub Jays, when they, when they're in a strong habitat, let's put it this way, if they, they are considered strong in that they can reproduce, they can keep gaining numbers. If that population peaks out, it's no longer strong. So you want to keep an area, you want to deal with a big area. And again, fire rotation in order to always have the latest and greatest best habitat, you want to do some fire suppression. But if you look at these two areas, you're looking at two very different areas. So going into it, and I'm going to kind of click the slides a couple of times, the same slide here is going to, you're going to see that this area is on the east side, so it's Malabar Scrub East. And what we're talking about is it's about twice as large as west. And the other thing is that it's more suited for scrub habitat. You've heard some folks say that today. It's a contiguous property, and to me, I was trying to figure out how to explain what it looks like. To me, it's sort of a computer-generated image of some kind of creature with a little tail and running to the left. But if you really look at it, it's a big square. Most of it, if you think, is almost at 4,000 feet wide, 4,000 feet high. So from a simplicity sake and the amount of time we're talking here, you're talking 16 million square feet, which equates to, instead of it being with its feet at the full gray area of 392, 393 acres potentially, you think, the square comes down to about 367. So it's roughly 26 different than the square we're looking at. Okay, what are you talking about? Why are you talking this? Who cares? It's not a square. Well, the best way to do a scrub habitat is to start and do the buffers coming in. We're not denying that. But if you look at this, look what happens when we take a look at this. At the 1,000-foot current Malabar Scrub Restoration Plan metric, we're talking coming in 1,000 feet from the northeast, south, and west. So the green area is essentially what would be considered scrub territory. That would be optimal, because it's 1,000 foot, optimal according to the F W C requires 1,000 foot. So now you have optimal scrub. Well, how much scrub now does our 392, or really, I'm talking the scrub, so the 367 converts to 91.8 acres of optimal? Where you think, how are we going to fit that many scrubs in, Scrub Jays into that area? We're talking optimal, they're not going to hang out in the gray area, because that's where the vulture predators potentially have time to get to them. So if the green area is what we're after, 1,000 feet, then we're really dealing, again, basically 92 acres there. But if you look at it as being, what if we use the 300-foot, kind of like, correct, saying sanctuaries, kind of like Kennedy Space Center is, as identified, again, with a lot of the F W C documentation, Scrub Jays need a minimum of 300 feet. So if we go to the other extreme of 300 feet, what do we have? Well, again, coming in 300 from northeast, south, and west, we've got 265.4 acres. Okay, what in the world is this guy saying now? What I'm saying is it translates to how many Scrub Jays can Malabar Scrub East handle, depending on how you interpret the project. Well, you're either at 92 or 266. What does that really mean? Well, 22 acres per Scrub Jay family, and that's, that's given, it's 22 to 24, 25. We're saying, okay, minimum of 22 acres per family. You do the math, and the difference between interpreting Malabar Scrub East at a 1,000-foot buffer versus at a 300-foot buffer is 12 families if you do the 300. It's four families if you do the 1,000-foot. So we looked at the plan, and we had issues with the plan. The plan says 1,000. We don't think that makes sense for what we see. And we try to do our homework. And again, take similar look at west. West is even a little bit stranger, more difficult, consider it a more complex side to look at. With Scrub Jays here, you've got basically about half the acreage. If you look at it, it's, if you look carefully at the habitat, it's actually less scrubby. It's more woodsy, it's a little different, there's a bunch of creeks running through. You've got right-of-ways that you're not dealing with on the east, meaning you can't take out trees on the right-of-way. You've got more forest edge, much more. And the big thing that's kind of interesting is if you look at this from a diagonal perspective, the other one was kind of a square, well, look what we have now. You've got a diagonal that goes basically, people that are familiar with the area, if you were to stand on a bridge and wave to somebody, you could be standing on the Malabar, Port Malabar Boulevard Bridge, and if all of the trees come down, as is in the plan, or basically, then somebody with their feet on the edge of Malabar Road over a mile away, they could see each other. That's, that's the significant, that's why people are upset, that's why this room's filled with people. We think it's too extreme right now. So this is why we're talking about this. If you then take a look at, you know, we talked that there is some opportunity on the east, no doubt, but if you take a look at the 1,000-foot, you kind of see 1,000 in magenta ink on the, essentially the font on the bottom. 1,000 feet just plain doesn't work a whole lot on the west side. But the red bars that you see throughout this thing, all those red bars are coming in from a border, up, down, sideways, there's all kinds of borders. That 300 feet then nets you three rectangles in the middle. Talking about what they are, we'll call them A, B, and C. If you're to add up A, B, and C, that what is Malabar Scrub in parcels, and we're talking all the way to Turkey Creek Bridge on Port Malabar, 181.5 acres, adding that up on the Revard County Property Praiser site, you've come to 68.8 acres is only, the only amount that you would have out of the 181. So we're looking at that, and that's at 300. Again, not 1,000. Unfortunately, the concern of town of Malabar is the plan calls for 1,000 feet. So number one, if it's 1,000 feet and people really want to do the science, they can't do it, is kind of how we see it. They could do it with 300, but you're getting up with the, those three rectangles we're up looking. And again, this is not, not down to the inch, but, you know, for the main idea, this is very close as far as what we're looking at. The reality is, there's not that much of that opportunity on this side. But it equates to, again, 22 acres per family. You're ultimately coming down to three families. And I think you're talking about how many acres are we dealing with for how many families? Does this make sense, or is there some room for compromise? Is there some room for opportunity, should we talk? That's why we're here today. So bringing it together, ultimately, again, let's look at it. We're looking at town of Malabar, we're looking at basically the greenway, the heart of the greenway are these two pieces of Malabar scrub, Cameron in between Turkey Creek at the top. That's all natural area. You've heard all kinds of people basically say, they've seen all kinds of wildlife. Well, if it's cut down in these yellowed areas, what you're going to see is those animals are going to not be there, they're going to be elsewhere, and we're not sure where they're going to go. And it's just wrong. If you look at the, if you do a Google lookup, you put into Google basically Malabar Scrub Sanctuary, you know, first place everybody's going to look, what do you get? You basically get a description of multiple habitats. You get it saying that it's a great place for people to observe upland to wetlands, transitions, different creatures, different place that you can go. One place with a bunch of different creatures, different habitats. And we're, this is all being treated as if it's one site. We think that the fit factor doesn't make sense. We're basically proposing this. And this is what I think everybody's talking about in here. You've heard the word compromise, you've heard the word balance, you've heard people basically say. basically saying, hey, surely, you know, we're putting man on the moon type, we're Brouard County, surely we can work this out. You've got a major population counting on this as the passive recreation area, and you get environmental people wanting to save this project. We can do both is what town of Malabar is suggesting. If you look at these numbers, the numbers that you see, again, blue in the east, red in the west, those are not to scale. Okay, those are just so we can see it on the wall here today. Those are generally where we're talking at. If you look at it, there aren't any in the middle of the opportunity areas. Again, west is kind of diminished just by the nature of west. So it really took in more at the east side. But if you look at these numbers in your packages today, you have specifics per each of these requests. How many trees are being requested to be preserved? How many acres that involves? All that is summarized, and what it comes to is ultimately this. You've heard the number 3% thrown out, can't we compromise at 3%? Can't we possibly do this? We're suggesting that we can. Town of Malabar has worked real hard to produce a package that we can work with the county. We can save scrub jays, but we can also respect the other ideals of the mission of Eels, which as you heard, a lot of people thought it was not to just cut down forests. So your perspective here is itemized in your package. Again, what it comes to is 507 trees on 17.7 acres. That equates to about 3.1%. That also includes a modification, one site, you can see number six area. That site we're suggesting, requesting I should say, that that be converted to a 40 trees per acre. And you all, I think there's some folks in here that respect that not all birds live in scrub, that you actually have woodpeckers, cockaded woodpeckers in Florida, these are a rare bird. We feel that number six down by the pond north of the community park in Malabar, that area there should be 40 acres, 40 trees per acre. Simple change, involves 4.13 acres. That 165 trees is also part of the 507. So again, 3% of the change is all we're asking for. The last thing, doesn't involve moving trees, it doesn't, or removing trees, it doesn't involve any acreage. It's basically talking about working with the county to reroute trails to where they're not so much in the scrub area, so it nets more scrub jay area territory, but puts some of these more on the periphery. So again, please look at this map. This map basically says on the edges is where we want to save some trees. And then it's the middle that you've got to work into. So again, 300-foot, come into the middle, start the 300-foot on the inside of the sanctuary, after we save a few trees that are in these key areas. We've worked real hard on this, we think we are at a point where we can reach, we're hopeful that we can reach some kind of agreement today. And ultimately, what if, again, strong look at that, the middle has got to be empty for the scrub bit. It would be reduced, it could be optimal level as far as scrub intensity, as far as density, open area, scrub height. We're not arguing with that part, we're just saying we need to keep some stuff on the sides. So we hope that, we hope that you enjoy the package, but I think you'll find it's pretty serious about we found some compromise. So hopefully this is a good day for everybody, because I think we are ready to talk. Thank you. Any questions?
Drew, could you bring up the fact that the backup slides, I was tech.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, the packet contains all the backup here. So we have a lot of information that I think we'd be here a few days to go through. And I think it was better that I just did those slides up front. But you can see especially on some of these, each one is separately identified with photos, with dimensions, what it is we're asking for, and the total trees that we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name's Mike Dye, I'm the program manager for Dangerlands. You know, I just want to start out by saying, look, we'd rather not be here either. It took me years and years and years to consider what had to be done to deal with scrub habitat. We struggled with it for many, many years. But I'm now in my 26th year with the county, and I've seen the science for many, many years, I've seen these systems work, I've seen them be restored, I've seen them go from zero jays to so many jays that you can't walk through a site without them landing on your shoulders. It works, and it is scrub, and it's just the nature of what we do. So I want to start out just by pointing out here, there's two photos on the screen. The photo on the left is what overgrown scrub looks like. These are overgrown oak trees, these are not live oak trees, they are scrub oak trees, sand live oak scrub trees. They are not supposed to be that big, they've only gotten that big due to fire suppression. And pine trees have infiltrated the area due to fire suppression. So all this happened prior to the county getting it. And now we're in this issue of having to get these trees back down because the normal fire cycles that we're putting on the system is not working. The photo on the right is what it's going to look like. This is not a place where animals are going to go spurring off into other places. These places have deer. I mentioned, I heard someone say that Jordan scrub has no wildlife. I was just down there last week and I saw two deer, which, there's an abundance of scrub jays on the scrub sites in that area. The idea that wildlife is leaving those areas couldn't be further from the truth. So we're really, this is what we're looking at here, this is what we're trying to achieve. It's not a clear cut. It's not vegetation completely removed, it's just trees reduced down. This is what one to two trees per acre looks like on a landscape on the right. It's not a clear cut. The property was purchased, as many people said, under the referendum specifically for the purpose of protecting scrub species. And the policy manual that we operate under was actually created by the county commission prior to the vote going to the public. In fact, it went to the public in 1989 and failed because there was not a lot of science based on the system. And then in 1990, in the summer of 1990, the policy manual was created, and this is what it said. It says that the primary objective for the program is to protect, the protection of the landscape for preservation, and a clear secondary objective is where some of the lands can be used for non-consumptive recreation. So what is optimal scrub habitat? It's essentially, as Drew pointed out, it's a condition in which the population, the individuals in the population grow to adulthood, survive to adulthood instead of dying before they get there. This is largely an open landscape, four to four and a half, five and a half feet tall essentially, with buffers that vary, but ideally you want to shoot for a thousand-foot forest edge buffer from the edge of any central territories. So again, this all happened because of 30 years of fire exclusion, natural fire exclusion. Normally, natural wildfires prevent all this from happening, they prevent these trees from going in these densities, and prevent these oaks from going, growing this large. And we have been trying for a number of years since the property's been acquired to take care of this issue with prescribed fire and roller chopping, and we've had mitigation development here, which I'm going to talk about in a second, which has helped. So the site has had three private development mitigation projects on them. Most of that mitigation work was done on the Malabar west side. So all these areas, these blue footprints show where this development took place, or where, so these were developments, they were impacting scrub habitat in other parts of the county, and they were, in order to get their permits for their development, they were able to come onto this property and get permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the St. John's River Water Management District to improve scrub habitat to a particular condition. Now, the permit required that those tree curtains be removed. And what happened back in the most recent one, I think it was like 2014, staff made a decision to minimize the number of trees that came down along the trail specifically to see what was going to happen with the scrub jay response. And we were very clear at the time that we did that, that there's a very good possibility that we're going to have to come back and remove those trees because we're very confident that the jays are going to come back and take care of it. Now, under the permit, we were required to do that in the first place. So we're held accountable, you know, not only to our own management plan, but also to these mitigation permits. And I will say that at the time we did this, the town manager, it was a different town manager, was okay with us using the right-of-way in which we maintain a fire line, and all that mitigation was done right up to the edge of that right-of-way, and that's why those trees were removed at that particular time. So overall, we have work to do across the whole landscape, but most of the landscape, especially in Malabar east and the central part of it, is in really good condition. In fact, it's a reference site for the Florida Natural Areas Inventory at the state of Florida. So it's one of those exceptional areas where you can see what scrub habitat is really supposed to look like. We are, we will, are leaving out the major creek bottom on Malabar west, which is the area where the sort of double yellow lines are. And as I said, the vary, the truth ending will vary, you know, depending on, in some cases, we don't have to do any because it's already in great shape. And we will, but we will be working specifically towards habitat descriptions that are stated under FNA, which are habitat descriptions that are used by permitting agencies, used by all of the land management agencies in the state of Florida. So we're not doing anything abnormal. So by now, mainly the scrub jays are responding to the mitigation work that is done. That's the primary issue. We also have the PVA study, which has shown that we are, have a much shorter timeframe for this population, and we need to be working quicker. But the PVA also showed us that we can sustain this population long-term as long as we can manage all of these sites in the context together. And managing 70% strong habitat, you have to remember that habitat, scrub habitat fluctuates. Optimal scrub habitat is only a particular point in time in the state of that property. So property growth, the trees grow up, they get too big, fire knocks it back down, and then it's too small, and then it comes back up. So it's in this just little sweet spot that you have to keep managing. Normally that was done with prescribed fire on a regular basis. But you can't just keep 70% of your habitat in a strong condition. You have to have a lot more than that available so that you can have 70%, because it's all going to be at different stages of the process. We recently moved, I mean, within the last two months, we relocated as part of the PVA four families of scrub jays. It's about, I think there were 16 birds that we moved from the Crookshank Sanctuary, which is doing exceptionally well. In fact, it's overpopulated with jays. And we moved four families to Grant Valkaria, where we recently did some restoration work. And we know at least two of those jays have found their way to Jordan scrub. We haven't seen any make it to Malabar yet, but they are migrating back this way, so that is a good sign that what we're doing is working. There have been some recommendations related to trails, we think some of these have merit. We have proposed options related to trails, in fact, moving some of the trails out of the scrub zone and into the hammock areas where they won't ever be impacted by the scrub management. And we have had, we've provided a number of compromises here in addition to the trail, so we've looked at doing some additional trail modifications. We have pre-identified trees along these sections of the trail, they were left previously, and we have determined which levels of trees. We had the scrub jay experts come out and say, how many of these trees can we leave in one particular place along the trail? So that's already been done, those were marked. We've also looked at the perimeter of the trail, so if you look at the, at picture number two, you'll see that's the north Boundary Canal Trail on the north side of Malabar East. So all these trees that are in the fence line, that are basically between the fire line and the trail, or the boundary fence, we're going to be left anyway. We're planning on really taking those down. We've identified an additional bunch of trees along the Country Cove property to try to minimize, you know, that concern on that side. And we have identified, as you see here, three different scenarios related to trails. So these maps sort of show, the left is Malabar west, and there's a green line that goes around the bottom of the side and then to the east again. And same on Malabar east, did I say Malabar east? Malabar west on the left, Malabar east on the right. All those green lines there are where that vegetation already exists. So all that vegetation that is along the right side of the paved trail along Marie Street, so it's between the paved trail and between the fence, is not going to be removed. All of that buffer vegetation will remain there. And then we've also went out and pre-identified where you see these trees, where are the trees that would be preserved that are on the inside of the fire line. Obviously, that's more of a concern for us, but we took the time to go out there and say, okay, well, how many can we leave? What are the distances we need to make sure that those trees are far enough apart that they don't cause perching problems or raptors? These are some of those examples. So top left, you have a paved trail on Marie Street. Marie Street is on the other side of the trees to the left, so all those pine trees along between the paved trail and Marie Street along the fence line will remain there. Picture to the right, same thing on Malabar west, so all that tree, all that vegetation that exists between the line and the homes would all remain there. Bottom left, same thing, all the palm trees and trees along the left side would remain. And then some of the trees, the trees on the right would be more thinned out. And the bottom right, again, this is, all of those trees right there in that picture would be left with the exception of probably the pine tree that's to the right, but that's all the stuff that's along the fence line. So there's a significant amount of buffer vegetation there. So I'm not aware that we've ever really been able to land anywhere on having the same opinion about what to do with the trails, but, so I'm not seeing anything in the presentation that's any different from what we already discussed, and if there is, there's always room to talk about that. But I didn't see anything in this presentation about the 25-foot wide buffer that the town wanted us to leave around the perimeter of the site, so I don't know where that stands. But there's a lot of talk about this, the thousand-foot buffer and the 300-foot buffer. The difference between the two is that a 300-foot buffer is determined by the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to be a short-term solution, it's not a long-term solution. The other argument is that, well, we couldn't get 1,000 feet at the Crookshank Sanctuary, so why even try to go that far? Well, Crookshank Sanctuary has been extremely successful to the point where it's one of the more popular places to see scrub jays in Brouard County. In fact, so many so that we've had to move some of them to the south, which is really what the position we want to be in, because we, the key with scrub jay populations is ensuring that you have enough gene diversity in that population. If you don't, they simply just breed themselves into extinction, they become isolated small populations, and they're just going to survive. But going, going less, you know, leaving more trees along the buffer just because you can't achieve 1,000-foot buffer is really contrary to the idea of protecting the scrub jay. So, and this is just the last slide, and this just shows in the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Scrub Management Guidelines, which guide everything that we do, you can see the difference between the optimal scrub conditions on the left and the 1,000-foot buffer at the bottom. And then suitable scrub jay habitat is really only for short-term protection of the scrub jays when you're talking about a 300-foot buffer. So with that, that's all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now is the portion of the agenda in this joint meeting where the elected officials, the town council and the county commission can consider the issues that you heard, maybe ask questions of their respective presenters, and discuss any possible solutions.
No worries. I'm so proud of all of us sitting here today that, you know, and my hope and prayer is that we will be examples today for, where we have this blessing of this land in Brouard County, that we can work this out, and I think we can. I live, I buffer, I live in Country Cove, so this is my district, and I've lived here for 30 years, and I would say that, you know, I think we can come, I really want to come to a resolution. I do have a question though, living there, just as a resident. So when I looked up Google, I'm not an expert, I Googled the scrub jay, and I've lived there, and I've seen them, and I, you know, my family enjoys it. I, when I first moved here, we used to have prescribed burns all the time. And I can say that I don't, I mean, within the last five years or so, my question is, when I Google it, it's like prescribed burns are to that, this is free life. So we do all this work, I don't feel like sometimes it's been made. I don't feel like sometimes it's been maintained to keep it at an optimal within these last 30 years or whatever we voted on the referendum. And a lot of times, I feel as a resident that we, you know, we kind of get a bad name that we are against scrub jays. We're the ones out there, you know, cleaning it up, doing it. We're the, it's our land, too, and mostly. And so, I want to be good stewards of that, but I also want to, like, moving forward this, we're going to do this grand thing, and then is it going to be taken care of? I don't feel like it has been in the last 10 years with prescribed burns. And when I read about it, it sounds like that's what needs to be happening on the maintenance level of that. So, why did it get so overgrown?
Right. As I mentioned, it's overgrown because it was overgrown 30 years prior to us acquiring the property. So we have tried very hard to use prescribed fire and roller chopping as a tool to get the vegetation back down. The problem is, is that once a scrub oak or a pine tree becomes too big, it becomes fire resistant. And those large trees that we're talking about today are the trees that have been there from the beginning that we have not been able to get under control with prescribed fire alone. That's why we have to do the mechanical removal.
And then will we have prescribed burns to maintain that if we, you know, we're going to, we're going to come to some resolution hopefully, and moving forward, that we would, let's really take care of the scrub jay, is what I'm saying.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, yeah, you'd have to have regular prescribed fires at the appropriate intervals in order to...
And that would be on the eels to do that.
That's correct.
Here's a question I have. Looks like, or you guys are willing to make some compromises here. A lot of us were willing to make some compromises also. So, I mean, what will it take to get the, for the public, you know, get back into use of the recreation, you know, cutting, you know, opening the gates? What can we do for that? And while we're still doing this negotiation, negotiation? I mean, can't, can we make a good faith after no people are able to use the land while we're doing all this?
You want me to take that? Yeah, I, I've always said that the more willing, when a permit was issued, that we would immediately go and do that. You talk about good faith, and I don't know if you were on the commission or the town council at the time, but arbitrarily, there was a $40 fee for cutting down each tree that happened. And again, I don't know, I'm not putting a blame on any of this stuff. I'm saying we took action, as well as you taking action. So, do I think anyone's blameless here? No. But, if you were to issue or make the, if you, if you were to commit to issuing the permit right now? Absolutely. In fact, I'll go out there, put on some shoes, and go out there and help you remove those gates today.
We need to get the two parties together to negotiate a handful of trees. It sounds like we have a group of, and, we need, you know, we need to come to a resolution on, on what we're going to preserve, or we're, you know, there's a give and take between the two, the two sides. So that, I mean, who from your side is going to be doing that with, with us?
I think that would be with the attorneys, Mr. McNeet, for that part right now, correct?
My understanding is we've already done it. This was, this was the compromise put forward by the experts, and we were hoping you would follow, not only the, follow the science. And, and that's all, that's, that's all we're asking here. And if, if we go forward and, and the issue, the permit is issued, then immediately, I have no problem. The gates are not what this commission intended to put up. In fact, we gave, I believe, 30 days warning that it, before we did it, so it's not something we've done in the dead of night. And we got no extension on the permit, so, again, I don't know if you were there when that $40 fee magically popped up, but, but that's how we came here, and that, our, my position, I would speak from the board, but when we came together and made that vote, that was a condition that we would immediately take down the gates.
But I still think we have a little bit of work to do from the two sides. I think we're fairly close on the, now I see you guys are willing to leave some buffer strips, and I see that, from our side, we're not, we're not quite there. So I think somehow it needs to go back, you know, before we go back through a little bit of negotiation to come to a resolution. I think both sides are fairly close, from what I can see.
I think Mr. McKnight had tried this at a previous meeting and wasn't able to get information out as far as moving trails, am I correct on that? That's probably ended up kind of in this position, because I believe it kind of got shot down on some ideas. Because right now, I know you're talking about moving the trails, but that was already a topic...
Well, I think we need to have an agreement.
That was already a topic of what was being considered, so Mr. McKnight, you do come back in.
Right. So, my understanding, there was not any support from the town on the trail proposals that we have. And, as far as, as far as the science is concerned, we have, we don't feel that there's any more room for negotiation of the tree densities, because anything doing, leaving any more trees than what we were proposing to leave in place now would be detrimental to the overall goals of the property.
Did you offer the tree, the trail relocation was offered, was previously offered, or is this something new? Does trail re, because it's not set in stone that the trails are to be relocated. That's something...
Correct. It isn't, but we, we have offered those as compromise options to relocate the trails. And those are still on the table.
It has not been negotiated. That's just, it just recently was offered.
It's been since the beginning, since the first time the Greenways and Trails Committee proposed considering relocating trails. Ever since that originally happened, we, we were supportive of doing something similar to that.
More recently, at the end of last year, Mr. Knight and Carbone and Matt Stenit and I walked the property out there and talked about the potential trail relocations. There may be an opportunity for Mike to elaborate just a little bit more on what that trail relocation would look like. Would actually add additional trails in terms of the overall length, that relocate some of those trails to parts that are going to be shaded, where trees will remain naturally.
Well, if we can't get an agreement here today, but I'd like to see the attorneys to go back to the table, if they're interested in an agreement between the two parties. They're fairly close.
Well, if we, if we don't get an agreement today, what's going to happen is, we're going to be selecting a mediator within the next 14 days, and we will be back at the table, attorneys and staff from, from both parties within 14 days of that. So within the next 28 days, what would happen is a mediation where we're staff could potentially mediate a disagreement, but it's going to be hard if our electeds who we report to indicate today that we're not, we're not there. We certainly try in good faith. After that, it would go back to court. In court, the judge gives you a decision, it's typically all or nothing, and these compromises that we're discussing, things like trail relocations, which are negotiated, that's not part of what happens with the outcome of this.
It sounds to me like staff has some details to work out, and I don't know that we're going to come up with a resolution today, but it sounds, staff needs to get together. Our staff, our attorneys, and come up with a compromise. I believe everybody's going to come up with some level of compromise on this, because obviously, we're not going to have anything to present at this week. So, it would be something that we'd be able to be prepared, as long as we have the understanding that we're willing to work with. I would like to see it go back, have the staff get back together, see if we can negotiate before we go that other step, and see if we can negotiate something.
I'm probably not agreeable with that with the part we're at, other than moving some of the trails, because we've been through this a bit. I don't know where the other commissioners are on this. But, part of the issue is, is the bike path, even if we did move it, which I don't mind moving it, it isn't going to be affected. It could still be used for recreation. The only part that will be affected is some of the shading, which are the primary purpose of trying to protect the scrub jays. Again, is we've got the responsibility of protecting the scrubs, it was given to the county, and even us moving forward, trying to do these things, it's expensive. So if there is any way not to cut it, we would rather not, because we have to pay for them as well. But as the NASA scientists came back on the information we got, this was the recommendation that came out of the Eels Board as well. Am I correct, Mr. McNeet?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's kind of what we're, we're looking at right now. It's not, the county's not making any money from doing this. Matter of fact, it's costing us a fortune, but we're just trying to do our best with what responsibility we've been given with the state of Florida by this property.
And there, there's no consideration for the fact that it's only 3% of the land bottomed, and they are specific, unique areas that, you know, there's other inhabitants in the areas. There's the pine trees, there's other species around the one pond behind Malabar Park, and it's 3%. And we had this discussion at one of our council meetings, Mike was there for that. And, I'm not a scientist, but it seems as though 3% is not going to significantly affect the plan, how well the intent of the plan's going to work. You know, we've, we've done our part in this town. We've given up rights and ways. We've given up different areas in the town. We, the fire department has protected the land as needed. They provided service to the eels when they had the prescribed burns. Manpower resources willingly went out there to support them. And on the same token, that has come to a pretty significant cost to us as well, because the, there is no tax base on that land to support our efforts. And also, we lost that land for development in our industrial area, in our higher-density residential area, which is, you know, Malabar Scrub, Jordan is the industrial. You know, the town's given up a lot, and I think that only as the 3% is... I've been living in this house since, I bought property in 99. I've been hanging out in Malabar since 1978. This was my place, this was my place, and I wanted to be there. And I started sitting on council in 2002, and I've been on, on council three quarters of the time since then. You know, my heart's in this town, and I know a lot of people who really love this town and will do a lot for this town. We have trail efforts. We go out there, we built the Cameron Trail Shelter. We've done trailheads. We're building another trailhead right now that only serves the Jordan Scrub, right on Marie Street. It's a volunteer effort by the county. This town is devoted to our trail system. We've given up 1%, 2% of our land. And, again, that comes at a major cost for us, because we have no financial support or potential ground for that. So, I think the 3% isn't too much to ask for.
So, so just real quick on the 3%. So, the issue, it's understandable why you would think that, but the issue is not the percentage, the issue is the location of the trees. The problem is that the trees, where they sit, are right in the middle of these scrub areas and create these scrub curbs. Those are the problem. It's not a matter of a percentage of trees, it's the issue of the fact that the structure of these trees in this particular location is causing the problem. That's the reason that it doesn't work, the 3%.
Okay. Without council objection, I would like to throw our first offer on the table, to get it going. Number one, I would like to get the locks off of the gates without the permit. In doing so, the town will waive the tree, the permit fee, will waive the fee for the permit and the tree permit. It will also waive the tree survey. We would like to leave the populations of the trees per the Trail Greenways' presentation. So that's, that's our offer without council objection. So really, the only negotiation I see is non-metres per acre or...
Which is 500 and 700 trees.
So we're, you know, we're giving up a lot. We're giving up $400,000 per tree permit, 40, let's say 10,000 trees, $40 per tree. We're giving up tree survey. We're giving up a lot, like Ryan Dale said, we've already given of our county a lot of our industrial land. And so I would like to open up the trails again today to get those locks off. It's unfair to the citizens of the Barmar County that those locks are on there. You paid for that, I paid for it, and, you know, to get arrested for using the trails is just not right. So that's my offer to the commission.
I have a question, and I think you could answer. Subsequent to the, in your presentation, you showed that there were six compromise options. Subsequent to those six, and I think you've skirted over, but not a lot of attention is paid to it, you subsequently went back through that property, right? And moved that additional trees that went along. Those are the trees that you marked with the green trees in the presentation? So those additional ones that were not discussed previously, that you guys, when you went there to see which ones would be remaining, they are now shown on the presentation that weren't shown previously?
That's correct. There, there are trees that would have probably been left anyway, because when we were doing the work, we would, we specifically look at where the trees are, and we would try to be identifying them as much as possible along the trail system. So we just went out preemptively, identified where those are.
But they were ones that were not shown, so it was not known to anyone.
That's correct.
Be staying as well.
That's correct, yes.
I wanted to make sure that was clear, but I don't think that, that came out, that that's part of what was going on now.
Right.
Just real quick, to your point and your comment about the arbitrary tree permit. I, we, I've lived here, and we've had tree permits. The fines, we have not had the development that we've had with subdivisions and such. My own subdivision has been fined for taking out trees and having to replant them. So this was not an arbitrary thing that we did to be vindictive about those trees out there. And so, but the gates will question, yeah, I don't know. But it, there was an arbitrary, because we have, we try to preserve trees here, and we're a Trail Greenway Town as well, which is a very prestigious name of town.
I think we already had had this permit, though, and we had trouble trying to ascertain grant funds.
It expired.
Right, but typically, you would have just gone ahead and extended it, and I'm just telling you, you would have. So I, I think there was a little bit of emotional response with that. I don't know, but that's what we're here to pay for, but that's not all our bad.
May we, with permission, bring up that slide that Mike was referring to with the additional trees? And, so, what we, what we're saying is, I think we're close, okay? Okay? And, and I think, I want to give Drew an opportunity just to address it very briefly, if you don't mind. So, Mike, I understand correctly, all those little new pine trees there are additional preserved trees since, since we last spoke? Is that correct?
They are, that's true. On a map, they are additional. They would have been trees that we would have left anyway, but that we just had not gone out and physically identified them on a map.
And just, what are those yellow things?
The yellow things were the trees that were previously identified along Country Cove.
To be preserved or removed?
Preserved.
All right. So, that map on the right-hand side is, the yellows are ones that you agreed to preserve, and the greens are additional ones since we basically last spoke?
Yes, and the green shaded line, the green line, the bright green line. All along the, all of this, you can just see a green line here, here, all of this, here, and here. All that is vegetation, existing vegetation between the fire control line and the boundary fence. That was not going to be removed anyway, but it was not previously shown on a map.
May I ask Mr. Thompson to come up and just address it?
I think we're close. I really do. If we work this out, we've worked everything out.
All right, real quick. I think this is one of those situations where we're trying to absorb a lot of information real quick. But I, the way I'm absorbing it from what I've seen in the past and what we presented today, I think the commission is at a disadvantage in that you haven't had the chance to absorb the specifics that are in your, your packets. And I think a lot of what Mike...
And I think a lot of what Mike, Mr. Knight has, has shown today, there's a lot of overlap, a tremendous amount. I think we've got two sets of our versions of this thing that are so close that it would be a shame to kind of abandon it at this point. A lot of work's going both ways to try to accommodate the other party. But I think the key thing is, is we're not disputing the inside of this project. The tree density in the middle is what we're trying to accommodate by basically saving certain little patches within it on the periphery of. So I think that's really the key thing. As Mr. Knight mentioned, the thousand foot, they want as much as they can. And we're basically trying to save, but start on the inside of what we're trying to save on the edge. So I think if we look through the packet, compare what, what Mr. Knight is proposing to what we're proposing, you're going to see a whole lot of overlap. Unfortunately, I don't know if there's time today to do it. The intent of the presentation done today was to put it in the packet so it would be available and not take the time of everybody to go into that level of detail, but it is there. Thank you.
Well, I think we're so close. Right now, it's on trail relocation and a handful of trees, from what I can see. I mean, is there, I mean, can we, can we put you two together for agreeably and see if we can work something out?
In my opinion, we tried, and, you know, all the...
We're trying.
We're trying today.
We're trying.
So, so the locations that Drew is referring to, he had a series of numbers on his slide, and each of those locations, we've specifically went to before this even became an issue, we specifically went there because those are the trees that we left last time outside of the Army Corps of Engineers permit that we were required to remove. So we left those there to see if, if the Jays were never going to respond to it, and all we're dealing with gopher tortoises and other scrub species, we would never have to be having this conversation. But because they have, those trees are the, are the problem. Those interior trees that Drew has numbered on the interior, we've already looked at all the 25 trees in the stretch and determined which ones of those trees we can protect. And I don't see that there's any, any room, from the, from a science viewpoint, I don't see there's any more room to find more trees.
Okay, so on the, on the edges, we're in agreement. Looks like both, both plans agree with the edges. So how many trees are in the middle that we're having a disagreement over? Do you have the slide? Do you look at this? We can't get something done here today. I don't, I don't think we're talking about trees in the middle at all. I don't think we are. I think we're up to the future. Can you put the slide back up? Let's put the slide back up and we see if we can work this out today. It's only got a half hour. I think we're arguing about nothing.
I, I think that what Mr. McKnight's saying is he's added those trees to the perimeter and will change some bike paths, and I think that's what y'all are saying.
I think that we're saying the same thing. We have an agreement here.
Just in the middle.
What he presented with those extra trees in the bike path.
Okay, that's what I, that's, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I think we can get an agreement.
So there's no trees in the...
That we get, that we get the parks opened back up, we can, we can get the trees on the buffer on the edges like we're talking about, we're relocating some bike paths, and we can get this thing resolved today.
Most likely, no, remember the $40.
Let's do it. Can you do, Madam Chair, can you do like a straw vote, see where you stand? I mean, we gave you an offer.
Okay, so on the middle trees, Mr. McKnight is the same as probably like 7,000 trees in the middle, but he's going to have to get to the lower height and bring them on. So if we put on those others on the outside and rearrange the bike trails, you'll, you'll be okay with that understanding?
I think they'll be fine. I think that's a good compromise. If you can, you know, let's come to a compromise here. I want, I want the park opened back up, like. Yeah. That's the only, that is, it has to be a compromise.
Yeah, so, I'm just confused, and I apologize, because what I'm seeing on this map is not, among most of that is not exterior perimeter, this is interior clumps of trees that have been debated on and on for a tremendous amount of time. So I'm, I'm confused as to how we're getting to only perimeter.
We're only talking about the perimeter, we're willing, I guess we're willing to concede some of these trees.
So we're good with our other map when we work out there?
We're going to go back to the other map on the perimeter. We're going to go back to the perimeter map.
Okay.
We're going to relocate, we're going to relocate the trails. We're going to open the gates back up. We, we waived the permit fee. And the trees.
Isn't that what we all want?
And the trees. And the trees. Can we put up the map? They were agreeing to just have to do this so we can all be on the same page.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. I just want to be clear, make sure we're on the same page. So, those numbers that you saw on Drew's map represent places along the trails, you know, like up in here and up here, these numbers are, are specific locations along the trails where there are groups of oak trees. And there's another one up in here, there's several down in this area. So, and, and what I'm hearing is that everyone's okay with the compromise that has been reached on that, that, that we have identified specific trees in those clumps that we are okay with protecting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, correct. That's what I think. But you're also going to relocate the trails for us and open the gates.
Sure, yeah, I, I don't, I'm not hearing that we really have any conflict other than, so we're, we got some perimeter buffer trees, we got that vegetated strip, we've got these, these individual tree locations. And one thing, what this map really doesn't show, and I apologize, is that it doesn't show that, you know, you would have, we'd have certain trees that are identified in these particular locations, you know, along this section of the trail. That doesn't show up in here, but those are certainly what we are happy to preserve. We've been happy to do that from the beginning.
Just, just be clear that we understand it's not the entire clumps of trees on those trails, it's certain trees that you marked, that the experts went out and said. But I think, I think we're so close. I think this is, this is what our intention was, to preserve the views from the site to protect these citizens so they wouldn't have to look out across, you know, the barren weedsland, you know, where it's scrubbed, or whatever we call it. I think we're very close here. And they also have been preserving the trails, which is important, you know, and getting people back into the park.
Absolutely, we think the trails will be much better.
Well, let's do this. Madam Chair.
Hold on, just a second, I should buy that young man the wrong shirt.
Just for clarification, I'm looking at the map that Drew, that Mall of York presented. And in the east, they are, all the numbers of the concerned areas are on the perimeter buffer. Will you be, will you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's all around the perimeter.
The western part.
The eastern part, no, we discussed the western one, but the eastern, that orders a, is a property of these, all order the perimeter edges of the...
Okay, so that's the same map? Right, so, so the, where we have, in my opinion, where we have conflict is number six. Okay, my understanding is the town wants us to preserve, to not take that section down to one to two trees per acre. It's a pine, overgrown pine forest. We don't agree with that.
Is that, is that adjacent to the pond that we were leaving on?
Yes, yeah. Number four, we have preserved some trees in there, but it's my understanding that the intent of this map is to not take any of those trees down in that section. So I want to be clear that we don't, we have a difference.
I think we can compromise there.
Yeah, okay. And again, I'm just trying to be, make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, exactly, and that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm really understanding.
So number one, not a perimeter site, but again, it's just a reduction of the clump that's there. And number, not really clear on some of these locations, I'm unclear what six is.
On east or west?
West, sorry, red six.
Got you. The five and the six were more about the trail relocations. I'm just concerned of, you know, why are we removing trail instead of just adding additional, you know, we're all for additional trails. The question was, why are we going to close down the trail to add new one?
So, so again, we're not supportive of adding a trail, we're, we're happy to relocate the trail, but we don't want to add to it because we think there's too many trails in the site already. So if this is an opportunity to move a trail out of a key scrub area that people are just going to be upset with when it gets restored, then I think that's a, a better solution. Three, obviously, is the trail relocation. Four, I don't believe we had, other than the perimeter vegetation, four is a clump of oaks, oak trees that we have not agreed to. So four is, four is not a place where we have identified any trees to be protected in that particular zone.
Because we're pretty close.
I would say we're closer.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what we need to be here. We're here to protect our town and voice the concerns of our constituents. They came to us with a lot of concerns, and it's our job. We have to, you know, we have to bring forth our concerns, more importantly, our constituents' concerns. So, you know, I think this is, it seems like we're getting really close here. I think we all want this to go away, at least financially, you know, we're spending a lot of money.
I'm going to let Fisher buy it first, and then Aaron buy it away.
A question for Mr. Knight.
Hold on, let me let this just buy a go first, and then we'll just get back to the circle.
Well, I'm sorry if that came across poorly. I greatly do respect not only the roles you play, but voicing the concerns of your constituents, whether I agree with whom or not. You, you serve a very, very important role, and I don't mean to diminish the concerns I've had with your board in the past, and my understanding is the people are no longer on the board for the way they treated my staff. And, and, and us is fine, staff, and again, that's not you, and that, that's in the past. So if that came across poorly, I, I, it's my fault and I apologize. I'm surprised I, that we've gotten to where we have right now. But let me encapsulize this, and I was taking pretty copious notes, and I looked over at the attorney sitting to my left, and the fact that he came up with the four points that I did is scary. So, and we've got a danger felt degree, I'm just a gator. So, number one would be remove the gates immediately. I think we could get that done very quickly. I mean, I'll get out there with shoes again.
I got trucking tools.
Number two, waive, waive the fees for the permit. Number three, relocate the trails. And the fourth is work off of the map that was presented by Mr. Knight. So, if those four conditions, again, I'm just throwing this, throwing this out here, I obviously haven't spoken with my fellow commissioners, but I would certainly be amenable to that, even going as far as remove the gates prior to receiving that permit, because I understand that that takes time. So again, real quickly, the four points were remove the gate, waive the fees for the permit, work off the, the county, Mr. McKnight, map that was presented up here, and, and four, relocate those trails.
May I add, just as an additional?
Sure.
Something additional for the town that was, that was left out of the proposal is along the trail, the trees that, that Eel had previously identified that could be saved, those will be saved as part of the package. And in addition to the permit fee, also waive the, the permitted and survey requirement is one of those, what I heard. I take this as a, for everybody. I think it's a compromise. So are you, are you guys all in agreement? And then we'll...
We're all okay.
We're all agreeing, Brian.
I just have one comment.
Yes, we do.
You, you consider leaving trees of other sites to see what happens? And I would appreciate if you would leave trees in our location to see what happens. You can always come back and, you know, do more mitigation of trees in the future if you need it, need fit to do this. So I would like, I would like that to be considered when you take out like a...
You guys gave your consideration on that.
Just leave the otamic now, and then if you need, thin it out later, you can do that.
Mr. McKnight, I would like any tree that you maybe had, like a, I don't know if, if you would have made a decision later. I would, I would expect you'd do that as your job. He's really good at...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So we have an agreement here?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, but I, I know he would do that.
If you, if they're going to direct you to cut trees, that's going to be a slow process, and everybody processes. If you leave trees and have to come back, what would be the cost to the council? Because once that timber guy goes away, he ain't coming back tomorrow to say, "Try to remove four trees."
Right, it is, it is very expensive, and, and we're in the position we're in today because we left trees in the past. We left those trees. So these, our goal here is to avoid that situation in the future.
Mr. McKnight, you're not going to remove any tree that you would feel was necessary, correct?
Absolutely not, yes.
But he's not, he's not going to directly direct it to those dams.
No, we, I think, I never said... Right, I, I think we're just making sure it's clear since it's labeled.
We have to take consideration if there's a, if there's a tree that should be saved.
Morris, give us a legal one here in a minute. Did y'all have more comments?
And one more, I just want to, keep going back to the same topic. As long as some of the map that we have provided is considered by Mr. Knight's, into Mr. Knight's plan itself.
I, I don't know if I'm going to vote that that gets put into the plan. I would just, since he's already done the study, and I don't know where y'all are, but if he comes across a tree and says, "Ah, I don't think I need to remove that one," I would certainly fall under his expertise at that moment, but, but right now, I would write that into this compromise right now. So I think we've, we've given a bit here to do this with adding trees. But Mr. Richardson, do you have a, how do we do this now to set this up so that we're all agreeable upon it, moving forward if we are? So what, what do we need to do from here? Do you think this is going to work?
Yes, Madam Chair, the next step would be an inter-local agreement between the parties. That's something we'd bring back, and you'd have to adopt at separate meetings. But I'd suggest the next step here, and I know Mr. Bone has to go to court, would be, since it's been discussed, since we summarized it, if I could just summarize once more, and then if each governing body would, would entertain a motion to direct the attorneys and staff to prepare an inter-local agreement to bring back to the respective commission and council for approval, that would be the step. So I'll just run it down one last time. Locks off gates without the permit in hand as soon as possible. County to relocate the trails. Town will waive the permit fee, permit requirement, and tree survey requirement. The trees will be maintained for the county, Mike Knight's map on the perimeter buffer that you saw on the, on the PowerPoint today. And along the trails, all the trees that Mike had previously identified that could be saved and remain, will remain.
Question. Does the Mr. Knight map take into consideration any buffer width? You know that they would, there's a request for 25-foot width. Is there any area that can be done where the trees are being, additional trees are being preserved?
So the only place where you have that kind of width is like the Long Country Cove, but it's just still tree thinning along there. But as far as the vegetated buffer that we identified with the green line, that buffer varies anywhere from, you know, one tree width to probably 20 feet. Depends on where the fire line is relative to the fence line.
I have just a question, just to, will it be done in stages? People are questioning, because I, I know a lot of concerns that the media are about the fire, about, you know, that not being noxious and things like that. Is it done in stages?
Fires are, are always done in small batches, because you don't want to burn the whole site at once. But as far as the tree removal, you know, we originally had planned to have Florida Forest Service come in and do the work, because it wouldn't cost us anything to have that done, because they handle the contract. And I'm not sure... And I'm not sure, due to the current market with timber, that we can get a contractor to come back in. So we're, we have budgeted some money to try to get it done as quickly as possible. So I think the tree removal would be happening fairly quickly.
I have a question. As far as the trail relocation, who will be overseeing that? And will you be working with our trails and Greenways? With the trail relocation, can that be a joint task?
As far as the tree removal, the oversight would be with us, with EAL program primarily. We don't have a problem helping, you know, working with the Trails and Greenways Committee on the trails, but we don't want to get back into a debate about where the trails need to go and which ones should be relocated and which ones shouldn't. So beyond that.
Would that be done in the...
Yeah, I mean, that would be our preference, yeah, having it handled through the selection of management.
I'd like to move on to get a council approval. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Bar County Commissioners' proposed resolution.
I'll second that. You don't have the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried five zero.
Wonderful. I think we did work here today. Thank you guys for coming down. It was really nice to be here.
Madam Chair, we need to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, Commissioner Byer, I'm going to let you read it and make a motion out of it one more time than it's so wonderful.
Okay, I'll make a motion to direct county staff to come up with an interlocal agreement that does five things. Locks off gates without permit in hand. County relocate trails. Town will waive permit fees, permit requirements, tree survey, and trees left per county Mike's map on the perimeter buffer from the PowerPoint that was presented. And along the trail trees Mike previously identified to be saved, that is the motion I'm...
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Goodson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just a minute.